Thank you. Good evening Wareham and welcome to the Select Board Meeting of July twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four. Before I have a roll call, I need a motion to appoint a clerk pro tem. And Mr. Bessie has volunteered to be voluntold, so I'll accept a motion.
I move to appoint Ronald Bessie as clerk pro tem.
Is there a second to that motion?
I second.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on the motion to appoint Mr. Bessie as clerk pro tem? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Sorry. Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Aye.
And myself, yes, it is so. I will have a roll call, please, Mr. Bessie?
Yes, present tonight with us is a member Sherry Quirk, Sarah Corbett, myself, Ronald Bessie, Chair Judith Whiteside, Town Administrator Derek Sullivan, and Town Council Rich Bowen.
I declare a quorum to be present and that Mr. Chadwick is not present. May I have the Pledge of Allegiance, Mr. Bessie, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Residents' comments. I believe that Ms. Slaven has the residence comment. Ms. Smith, if you have a residence comment, raise your hand. Resident comments, non-agenda items shall be limited to two minutes and there will be no more than ten minutes per meeting based on past practice. The Select Board will not respond or comment. Ms. Slaven, would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes. Good afternoon. Sandy Slaven? Um, I'm here to make a comment. At the last meeting, a select board member suggested that we take a period of grace for-
Ms. Slaven, I'm going to stop you right there. Thank you. Do you have anything else to say, Ms. Slaven?
I just wanted to talk about the open meeting law.
No, ma'am. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the audience who chooses to speak to this board? Good evening, Ms. Slaven. Seeing none, I will go to announcements. Ms. Corbett, please, announcements?
None at this time.
Thank you, Quirk. I will note for the record that the what says in front of Ms. Quirk says Norma Scoggan, that is inaccurate. It is Sherry Quirk who is present. Please note that for the record.
And I will rename myself as we speak.
Okay, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I do have one announcement. I noticed this tonight, but it was pointed out to me since our last meeting. If you watch the Pledge of Allegiance, you would have seen me raising my left hand. And I'm noticing that for some reason the figure is flipped and in fact, I'm raising my right hand, but it looks like my left hand. So when I noticed this, I asked myself if I should use my left hand in order to look correct and decided that that I should be in fact correct as opposed to visually correct. So for anyone who is concerned about whether I know that either the difference between my hands or the which hand to use, I do in fact know it's the right hand, but for some reason it's looking left. So apologies for that long explanation, but I don't want to be misperceived as someone who's not being patriotic or appropriately respectful.
Thank you, Ms. Quirk. And now it says quarrel.
Oh.
Are you done with your announcements?
Yes, I am. I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie, announcements, sir?
I have none tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I will announce that there will be an auction for the right to ask for an involuntary transfer for the license formerly held by Barnacle Bills. The Department of Revenue seized that license, as you all were aware. And they, they being the D O R, will be auctioning the license on the thirtieth of this month, just so that the public is aware. The successful bidder is only acquiring the right to file for an involuntary transfer, is not buying the license nor the location. Okay. Let's move on to appointments and interviews. Mary McPherson, would you please raise your hand? I'm sorry. And John, if you would let Mary McPherson into the meeting. Ms. McPherson, would you raise your hand? Mr. Bessie, I'll take a motion on the second one. Ms. Brizali?
I make a motion to reappoint Wendy Brizali as a member to the Cultural Council with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. For the record, Ms. Brizali had been on the council before. She took a one-year absence as required because there's a term limit. And this is a reappointment based on her previous service. Is there any further discussion on the motion to appoint? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Ms. McPherson, would you identify yourself for the record, please?
Hi, I'm-
And address us as to why you would like to be on this committee?
Hi, I'm Mary McPherson. I am fairly new to Wareham, have been here for a little over two years and I'm trying to get more involved in the community and have really enjoyed a lot of the local events that have been put on and have two small children that we always try to get them going to things. So I was looking at different opportunities and the Cultural Council stood out to me as something that we were already kind of engaging with and looked really interesting. I was able to sit in and kind of hear a little bit more about the committee and think it would be really great to be involved and just to have another input.
Have you attended meetings, ma'am?
I'm sorry?
Have you attended any of their meetings?
One, yes.
Do any of the rest of you have any questions, Ms. McPherson?
No, but just thank you for volunteering. That's very nice of you.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie, if no one has any further questions, I'll- do you have any questions of us, Ms. McPherson?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Okay. You understand that before you can be sworn in, you have to take the ethics test and the open meeting law? There's a bunch of paperwork that won't be ready until sometime next week.
Okay.
You, but you can go online and do those courses now before you before you pick stuff up. You can't be sworn in until you've provided proof of all of that to the office on the third floor. Okay?
And is that something I find on the same page where I applied?
Um, yes, I think it's under Volunteer Handbook. The links are in there, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Bessie, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion to appoint Mary McPherson as a new member to the Cultural Council with a term to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Is there a second to it? Motion made and seconded to appoint Ms. McPherson to as a new member of the Cultural Council. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Thank you very much for volunteering. And again, the paperwork won't be ready until next Monday, but there's some homework that you can do to speed it up.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. We have no hearings, but we do have a license and permit application for a change of manager. I will tell you that there's no one here and they're usually isn't on a change of manager. We don't require them to come in. We have all of the paperwork in the office. So unless any of you have any questions about the paperwork, I would accept a motion to change the manager for ACAP Inc.
I make a motion for the application from ACAP Inc., DBA, Wines &amp; More, twenty-four twenty-one Cranberry Highway, Wareham, Massachusetts, for a change of manager.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve that application. Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. We will notify the office tomorrow. Mr. Bessie, there's a very generous donation and I would accept a motion from you, please.
I make a motion to accept a donation in the amount of twenty thousand dollars from the Wareham Library Foundation to be put into the library's foundation account for the purpose of salaries for part-time staff.
There's a second to that motion?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the donation. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Discussion regarding whether to appoint a representative to the South Coast Bike Way Alliance. I sent you a link to the South Coast Bylaw, Bicycle Bike Way Alliance bylaws and hopefully you've had a chance to review them. So what we're really doing tonight is we're not appointing anybody. We're deciding whether we want to appoint somebody. Any questions, comments? Ms. Corbett?
Um, who? Who was our, who's our current?
There isn't one.
We don't have one at all. We never have?
I don't believe so.
Why is that? Do we know?
Well, if we had one, it would have been Alan, but Mr. Sullivan, can you weigh in on this one?
Alan was on it beforehand and the South Coast Bike Way after about ten years ago when we got the CPC funds to start the engineering, our local bike group basically died on the vine. I think one of the main people moved out, so there's, that would be the explanation.
Ms. Quirk? Ms. Corbett's still thinking, but I'll let you go next.
Um, is well, I guess the answer to the previous question may answer this question. Is there something to do on this committee that is of value to the town? And I've heard discussion at prior Select Board meetings of bike, potential bike paths and funding for bike paths. And I guess my feeling would be, and I am a bicyclist, so bike paths are, and bicycling are of interest to me, but if it's not in interest of the town and there is essentially nothing to do, you know, I guess I see less value in having a representative.
We did, I can answer part of what wasn't really a question, but we did apply for a grant to do the engineering for a bike path along Minet Minet Avenue. Over my strong objections, I will make it publicly known, I think that road is an extremely dangerous road. And I just find that it's just not an appropriate location, but that's my personal opinion that I've now made public. The original bike committee did in fact fold and this recent grant was within the past year, but for several years, there was really nothing going on. So at one point, one of the members sitting here this evening said that they believed that putting a bike way on Minet Avenue was a a bike path to nowhere because it doesn't have a beginning and it doesn't have an end. How about that?
So I'm not detecting a lot of, a lot of positive room here to do something.
Well, I think your question about the value to the town is a good one and I can't answer it, quite honestly.
Does one, does a town need to have a bike path committee in order to gain value from belonging to the alliance? Or do we know?
I don't know the answer to that question. We've already received the grant, so it's not going to help whether we get the grant or not. Mr. Sullivan?
No, I mean, there's no, there's no requirement of having a bike path committee to be part of the alliance. There's, it just depends on what you want to do as policymakers. It's up to you guys. Is this something you want to champion and move forward or not? I guess that's, that's the question.
Would you like me to put it on a future agenda and give you some time to maybe talk with Mr. Slaven and do some more research on it? Would that be an appropriate?
I think that's a good idea.
I think that's a good idea as well. I'm also interested in it, so yeah.
Okay. Then I'm, we simply will pass over this one in the minutes, okay? Mr. Rasmussen, would you raise your hand, please? Mr. Day, would you let Mr. Rasmussen in? On the agenda, we have a discussion and possible vote to provide a letter of support to the Buzzards Bay Coalition regarding the purchase of the Slocum Gibbs property. Mr. Rasmussen is with the Buzzards Bay Coalition and I hope he has some information about the request. They have applied for a CPC grant from Wareham, probably among other towns as well. It's an opportunity for the Coalition to protect several hundred acres of active cranberry bogs which straddle Carver, Wareham, and Rochester, I believe. Yep. Mr. Rasmussen, would you unmute yourself and identify yourself for the record, please, sir?
I will. Hi, everybody. Mark Rasmussen, I'm president of Buzzards Bay Coalition. Thank you for having me. We are hoping for your support for a really exciting land acquisition. We have currently underway with the Slocum Gibbs Cranberry Company. Slocum Gibbs owns seven hundred and thirty acres, the majority of which is in Carver, so most of this deal is in Carver. However, two hundred and fifteen acres of it, of the parcel comes into Wareham. Just, so this is just north of four ninety-five, north of the Tremont Dam Pond and sort of west of the Westfield Soccer Complex, that corner of town. It is a expensive acquisition. It's a five-point-eight million dollar purchase. Slocum Gibbs, to their credit, has given us the chance to save this land for conservation before they put it on the real estate market. So we're working hard to raise the five-point-eight million dollars to preserve this place. An extraordinary property, amazing stewardship over a hundred years by Slocum Gibbs Cranberry. They've taken beautiful care of this place and so a really neat opportunity to preserve it. Of the entire parcel, we are looking for, of the five-point-eight million dollars we have to raise, we're hoping that the town of Wareham will support three hundred and seventy-five thousand of that or about five percent of the purchase price through the Community Preservation Fund. We've submitted that application to CPA. The Wareham Conservation Commission has already submitted a letter in support of our application. The remainder of the funds will come from state and federal grants and from private fundraising that we're doing. The end result will be new publicly accessible open space adjacent to Westfield and a lot of Leveant River frontage. What's really exciting about this deal for us is a lot of the cranberry bogs and the altered land along the river will be restored. So this is a water quality and habitat improvement project for Leveant primarily, but it also has a lot of public access potential adjacent to Westfield, new trails, new public uses in a part of town that could really use it. So we're hoping that the Board of Selectmen will support our application to the CPC before town meeting this fall.
The application that was submitted to CPC is in your packet. You have had it since Thursday. It's several pages long and it does give you, the last couple of pages gives you an overview of where the property is, the property lines and what it looks like. It's a very substantial application. This, from my opinion, anyway. Any questions of Mr. Rasmussen? See, Mr. Rasmussen is the same age I am. He's really not, but he doesn't have a PowerPoint presentation. Mr. Bessie?
Um, I don't, I don't like to assume, but with the acquisition of this, of this parcel of this size, is any of it going to stay active bogs or is it all going to be decommissioned?
It's a mix. It's a great question. The bogs along the river corridor will be restored back to natural wetland, but there are a number of acres of bog which are modern upgraded bogs, very high-producing, good bogs, about thirty acres that we intend to keep in production. So some of this will not eliminate all cranberry.
So is that, is that something that the Coalition will, will take on or will they have somebody that will manage that? That portion of the property that will be left to harvest?
Yep. Now, we'll be looking at somebody to harvest the bogs for, so lease arrangement. But, but we're on our lanes, so it'll be our stewardship rules, it'll be our oversight to make sure that the bogs are operated in a really environmentally sensitive way.
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks. And Ms. Corbett?
Uh, thank you for doing this. This is a remarkable opportunity and I'm so glad that your organization has sort of the organizational strength to take this on. Will there be recreational opportunities? Hiking, kayaking, anything like that, or is it?
No, thank you. Yes, both. So the entire property will be open public access. I'm really excited to work with the town to figure out how that integrates with Westfield. So that, you know, where, where can we have new trailheads there, a new river access point for kayaking? This is a neat part of the river that's above Tremont Dam, so from here, there's a lot of new river frontage that could be accessed by kayaking. So no, it will all be open to the public.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Quirk?
I would also like to commend you for doing this and one of my concerns is that the natural lands of Wareham remain both natural and undeveloped and available to the public and you're doing all of those things, so I commend you for that. Thank you.
I will also say I'm familiar with the property. It is absolutely gorgeous. And the owner should be commended for offering it to conservation and preservation, in my opinion, rather than making a substantial amount of money on the uplands that would be able to be developed. Mr. Sullivan, do you choose to ask Mr. Rasmussen any questions?
Mr. Rasmussen, I had spoken about this beforehand. I'm very supportive of it as well. I think it's a great opportunity. I'd love to, love to consider it part of getting our nitrogen down for the TMDLs, so, you know, see if we can incorporate that as being one of our plans, but honestly, it's an exceptional piece of property and to to keep it and to do what they're doing, I think it'll be amazing. I look forward to working with them on it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions of Mr. Rasmussen? Then I will accept a motion to authorize the chair to craft a letter of support. Mr. Bessie?
I make a motion to approve the writing of a letter of support to the Buzzards Bay Coalition regarding the purchase of the Slocum Gibbs property.
Is there a second? Motion made and seconded. The letter will be drafted by the chairs. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Mr. Rasmussen, you're being heard tomorrow night at the CPC meeting, am I correct?
Yes, we are.
I will have the letter ready and I will email it to you and I will also deliver it personally to that committee.
That's really great. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Nice to see you. Take care.
Nice to see you all. All right. Have a good night. Thank you.
You as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is discussion regarding a letter that I sent to Representative Williams Gifford last week after a couple of discussions with Ms. Quirk. And Ms. Quirk, I'm going to ask you to step in here. The letter is self-explanatory. It's in there, but maybe some of the details that you would educate the public onto what this letter was intended to do and why it was important to get it done last week before we had a meeting tonight.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. I've talked about this a little bit in the past and that is that there's quite a bit of energy, no pun intended, being spent on clean energy legislation and related activities. And what has happened really is in the House and Senate, in pretty rapid succession, the Senate passed a clean energy bill and the House was considering a clean energy bill. Both of them very, very seriously curtailed the authority of state, excuse me, town land use boards to view solar projects and battery storage projects. And so what we were asked to do by the MMA, the Mass Municipal Association, is to draft a letter to our representative in the case of the House legislation, urging her, Representative Gifford, to not support, well, to support certain amendments to the bill in order to make it more palatable to municipalities. Now, the, I'm a bit amazed, I have to say. My knowledge of legislative activity is mostly in the federal realm where things happen quite a bit more slowly than on the state level. This legislation came on to the floor for debate and was passed very quickly. And so with the House bill passed, we had already a Senate bill passed. These two bills have many things in common but are not completely identical. These bills are going to go to conference in order to work out differences between them. Both of them, as I said, seriously curtail town authority and would end up with towns having jurisdiction really over smaller solar projects. And with these small solar projects, the towns would be given bylaws developed by the state. So it would be essentially a cookie cutter approach. Now, looked at these bills and looked at surrounding information. There is, there is discussion in the bills and information surrounding it of the need to be sensitive to environmental justice communities, which we are. The need to be sensitive to deforestation is an issue in this town. It's possible that, that these bills will contain or be interpreted to contain provisions that are helpful to Wareham. I think we need to spend a whole lot of time looking at and thinking about the legislation and the outflow of it so that to the extent that we are able to influence it, we can influence it in a way that is beneficial to Wareham or at least not harmful. But there is a lot still to be spelled out and learned about this, so with the chair's indulgence, I will, you know, really update you from time to time. With respect to the letter, it became very obvious to us that the day that we were asked to do a letter by MMA was the last possible time to do a letter. And so we had no choice but to go forward. I think the contents of the letter is, should be quite quite acceptable in that it seeks to preserve municipal authority over land use decisions, which I think is something that the Select Board would agree on.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Quirk?
No questions, but I just want to say thank you, Sherry, for keeping an eye on this and for being so proactive to stay in touch with what's going on with the legislature and getting this letter with Judith out to Susan. So it is, it's frightening, the prospect of the lack of local control. It is specifically aimed at large industrial solar arrays because those are the ones that could do this town the most damage in terms of deforestation, as you mentioned, and battery control, battery storage, excuse me, that we've talked about so often. And I've been keeping an eye on just the, the influx of solar projects alone, not to the depth of this legislation, but just having mounting concern over the fact that developer, solar developers seem to have their eye on Wareham and our large forests and we need to keep them. So thank you, Sherry, very much. And thank you, Judith, for following up.
The, the letter-
And thank you too.
Yeah, the letter was a standard, you know, letter that Mass Municipal actually forwarded to us with the suggested language, so they were, they really were on top of this and as Ms. Quirk points out, we got the information the day it was on the floor, which is too bad, but indicative maybe. So yes, thank you very much. Any questions, Mr. Bessie or Mr. Sullivan? No? Okay. All right. So there's no vote necessary on that. Is there any forty-eight hour business that I am not aware of? Nope. Okay. Nope, okay. Um, Town Administrator's Report, Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. Just a reminder again that uh Saturday, August twenty-fourth, the Second Annual Main Street Back to School Stroll will be held and businesses that wish to be a part of it, uh which can include from donating supplies or uh hosting a a uh location, if you will, which could just be a little table, but doesn't have to be a full structure. Um, please reach out to Patty Neal, P-N-E-A-L at wareham dot M A dot U S or five zero eight two nine one thirty-one hundred, extension three one one zero. Uh, you saw Mr. Rasmussen earlier. If you remember, we sent the conservation restriction, or actually Buzzards Bay Coalition sent the conservation restriction to for the Little Harbor Golf Club to uh the, through the Commonwealth last year. Um, they've, they've got it back with some comments, including the um the exception area, the roughly, I think it's about a four or five acre area where the clubhouse is. And uh that needs to be surveyed specifically for them. The Commonwealth likes to see that surveyed. So we're gonna take care of what needs to be done to continue and get that conservation restriction done. Uh, if you remember, as part of that too, this might be new to some of the other members, but we also have been continuing with Buzzards Bay Coalition, because we need a new uh septic tank at that location. So we need a new septic tank there. As part of it, we have been looking at grants and researching and I am going to butcher this, but uh we'll call it a septic, almost a neighborhood septic system. Uh, mini system for what could be the entire neighborhood to help some folks out and uh, so eh the original study came back that the best option would be a facultative membrane bioreactor. Facultative, I believe, which means it can choose some of the different formats. So uh we've put in for the second grant for that to look in for some of the preliminary designs, do some neighborhood outreach meetings and so forth. So just letting you know that that's something that um we talked about beforehand, but we're continuing on with the second phase of that. So it could actually be a really great option for folks and help remove some uh nitrogen from the waterways over there in the future.
Mr. Sullivan, could you spell the thing that you can't pronounce?
The F. A C U L T A T I V E, facultative.
Okay, and it's a septic system, is that what it is?
Yep, and I'm gonna send you the, everybody on the board, the uh.
Okay, all right, thank you. Sorry.
It'll be a membrane bioreactor, so uh interesting concept. And what, what's actually really interesting is instead of putting the uh, you know, the treated water uh at the end into the waterways or something, it can be utilized for the golf course itself and move uh some of the irrigation and such, so. It's a, it's kind of a neat setup, so. Uh, there's, there's a long way to go, so I don't wanna, wanna panic folks, make them think anything's coming down the uh pike immediately, but it's something we're looking into. And again, with the new guidelines coming down through the TMDL, uh total maximum daily load, we know that that's gonna impact folks with septic systems and especially in the area when you're near waterways. So this is an opportunity to eventually almost create a pocket plant in that area and help people out.
Excellent. Anything else?
Uh, no, I believe I sent you the email on the grant we were awarded for the cybersecurity and all the uh what was listed there. So I appreciate Mr. Underhill um going forward with that and it'll be nice to have emails that end with the dot dot M A uh dot gov, I mean, ending dot gov instead of dot M A dot U S, so. And uh that'll also help update the uh the website, so. So again, thank him and his staff for all they do.
Thank you. This is, Mr. Um, Underhill has applied and received that grant, the, or similar grant for many years, am I correct?
Uh, he's, the original cybersecurity that it's covered the town and the school department. Mr. Underhill put that in there originally, has been getting it year in, year out for the training for everybody, so. Um, you know, we continue to take up on more, more cybersecurity issues. It's uh it's one of the biggest issues of the communities are facing that maybe is a silent one that people don't realize, so. Uh, but we have seen some places get hit with uh ransomware and uh things such as that, so it's, it's pretty difficult.
Okay, excellent. Um, that's it?
That is it.
Okay. Uh, we have liaison initiative reports, boards comments, Ms. Corbett?
Um, no liaison reports. A comment that is gonna become a question and maybe um that's not what we're supposed to do here, but um, I was on vacation last week and was driving around town and going to the beach. And I went to, with my husband, we went to Little Harbor and I had never, ever, ever all the years I've lived in Wareham, seen that many people at Little Harbor. You couldn't find a parking spot, you had to wait. You know, you saw somebody putting their stuff in the back and you asked and you waited. Um, and just driving around down uh Sandwich Road, I saw a ton of people at the driving range and it just started to feel like our efforts of getting the word out there that Wareham is a beautiful place to come and vacation may be paying off. And it just seems like in years past, I don't know if I'm remembering this wrong, that there was some way to gauge sort of what our visitors were over the summer, maybe beach parking permits and onset parking receipts. Am I misremembering that? Is there some way to gauge what our visitor population might have been once the summer is over?
Mr. Sullivan?
Is to have over um uh at the, the one ninety-five visitor center is what I was thinking you were thinking of. They used to give a report on how many people came through there, but that hasn't been opened in uh in the co- that it's.
That was a long time ago.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we wing it on our um reports to be forty-four thousand people, which is essentially twenty thousand more than we have year round.
Yeah, it just feels like a lot more this year, and I'm not complaining, but it was just remarkable
Okay.
to go to Little Harbor and see those many people, that many people, but that's it.
Thank you. Ms. Quirk?
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mr. Bessie?
Uh, nothing at this time.
Thank you, Ms., okay, myself. Um, you will have gotten an invitation to a class that Mr. Bowen is going to be running for all land use board members and associate members on August first at five o'clock. And the purpose of the meeting, Mr. Bowen, do you choose to say two or three sentences about it?
I'd be happy to, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
It's, it's just to help people understand how a decision should be written, what a judge looks at when a board decision is reviewed, and how to arrive at a decision and how to assemble the evidence that lets you create a decision that is supportable. So I hope it will be valuable, valuable for people on these boards. I really enjoy teaching these courses and uh, I'm hoping that uh we can get another one or two on the docket before um Christmas.
Thank you. It will be in the multi-service center, five o'clock, August first, which I believe is a Thursday. You all have been invited, as is every member of those land use boards and committees, as well as their support staff. Um, let's see, Ms. Smith is here and she's been working on an effort called Twinning with Wareham, England. Uh, I know that Jared has been in, Mr. Chadwick has been involved in um getting the word out on that, and I know that uh the mayor of eh, uh Wareham, England will be here and leaving here on August twenty-fourth. She'll be here for a week. I've sent you all that information, I believe. And so we should be willing and able to put out some kind of, you know, welcoming party or something. Um, it is, oh, excuse me, it's October. No, it's, it's um it's October, because she's leaving just before the town meeting. Ms. Smith had hoped that she would stay for the town meeting, but because it's her wedding anniversary, the mayor will be going to Boston to celebrate that. But again, I sent you that information. Um, and then I have been watching the uh Senate and House for the progress of the Road Commissioners Bill, as well as the changing of the date of the budget submission for the um town administrator. Those are both charter changes. They were put into one bill, which is, I think, twenty-six thirty-nine, or something. I think I sent you that as well. Um, it is being reviewed as we speak, not as we speak, but it is under examination. Um, Mr. Pacico's office put the two items together into one bill as opposed to having two separate bills go forward. And Ms. Williams Gifford is also working on it as well. I don't know when that will take place, the change to the road commissioners for us. Um, but I am putting together an enormous amount of information because we will be road commissioners and we will be taking over the task of a committee that was created and took the task away from the select board many, many years ago. Um, and I just want us all to be prepared to understand what our responsibilities will be when, when that bill has been passed, okay? And other than that, I have nothing else. Um, Mr. Bessie, we have some minutes?
Yes, um, I'm, I make a motion to approve uh select board meeting minutes of six four twenty-two four and seven nine twenty-two four.
Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded.
No, motion made in second. Is there any further discussion on those minutes, on that motion? Hearing none, I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Quirk?
Yes.
Yes, I did you, I did it backwards. I meant to go Ms. Corbett, because that's the way I can see you on the screen. Um, Ms. Quirk, yes, okay. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
And Mr. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, aye, it is so. Is there any other business to come before us? No? All right, Mr. Bessie? Mr. Bessie?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second to that motion that is not debatable?
Seconded.
Motion made in seconded uh to adjourn at seven forty-two. I will go for a roll call vote. Ms. Corbett?
Aye.
Ms. Quirk?
Aye.
Ms. Bessie?
Yes.
And myself, yes, it is so. Thank you very much, Wareham. Good night, everyone, and thank you for your attention. Night.
Good night.